Motion to approve, well, approve city fee schedule.
Carla.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is to approve the city fee schedule that would be effective with tomorrow. The adoption of the new city code, we no longer have the fee schedule as an appendix to the code, so it'll be a standalone document that the commission will approve just by a simple motion in time there's any change to the fees. The fee schedule is in your packet. All the fees have been brought over from the Appendix F. There are a couple of changes that staff would recommend. The first one is page two of the schedule. Staff would recommend that the surrender fee per animal be changed from $20 increase to $50. Animal control staff did contact surrounding cities and found that Lansing and Tonga and Oxy both charge $100 for the surrender of an animal, so...
Carla, what is that? Is that when somebody brings an animal in?
Correct, yeah.
Drop off?
Yeah, the drop off, yes.
Their dog or one that they found?
I believe it's...
I would assume it would be like my dog.
Their own personal dog?
Yes, their own dog, yeah.
Okay.
They just drop them off?
Yeah. They can no longer...
Happens if somebody purchases a dog, has second thoughts and just drops them off.
Oh, okay, right.
Okay, surrender.
That makes sense.
But not if you find one wandering in your yard. No, it is somebody, yeah. Okay, thank you. So that would be the first one, would be to suggest that we increase that just to bring it in line more with what other surrounding cities are doing. The second one is on page seven. That is the, having to do with the vehicles for hire. When we redid that section, as I was talking with other cities and looking at what other cities do with taxi cabs and that type of thing, we were kind of outlying with what other cities are charging. We were a lot higher than most, so that would be a recommendation that the owner license, so that is per car, that is licensed as a vehicle for hire. We're currently at $100. We'd recommend that we lower that to $50. And the driver's license, so that is for each individual driver. The current fee is 35 and it suggests that we reduce that down to 25. And then included in the fee schedule, pages 10 through 16, we added the park and recreation fees. They weren't previously part of the fee schedule. They kind of had their own separate fee schedule at Parks and Rec, so we incorporated it into, so we've got one fee schedule out there that people can look at. And then we've added the refuse and the sewer charges to the fee schedule as well.
So all the fees that the city charges for various services are all rolled up into this document?
One spot, in one spot, correct, yeah.
And the advantage to that in terms of, will save us time? If we have a change to a fee, we can approve it by a simple motion as an agenda item versus having to go through the first and second consideration in terms of changing an ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Also thought that it is easier to read than the previous version of this thing, so that's good.
Yes, cleaned up quite a bit. All the extra definitions and stuff are no longer in there.
There's no other questions or comments? Entertaining motion.
I move that we approve the fee schedule as presented.
Motion has been seconded. Again, voting good, Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, review unsafe and dangerous structures given extensions.
Be handled by our planning and community development director, Julie Hurley. We'll go through properties on the demolition list that have been given extensions. Not for the unsafe structures.
Okay.
Mr. Lecter.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you recall, in May, the City Commission reviewed a list of properties, unsafe and dangerous structures for potential demolition. A number of those structures were given an extension until August 13th to complete work. The Commission again reviewed the structures at that time and gave eight of those structures an additional extension until this date to complete work, so this is a review of those properties. The first one is 905 Washington. This is a single-family house. The owner had stated that he was going to demolish it himself. There is a demo permit that's been pulled on this, but so far the demo has not taken place, and we have not heard from the owner on it. So the top picture was in May, bottom was August, and then here it is last week. So there is a dumpster out there now. I assume they're clearing it out, but again, the demo has not taken place on this one.
Are we going to go on these individually to make a motion, or are we doing it group?
That's a good question.
I would, you can do a couple things. You can get a consensus on each one, and then at the end you can just make a motion that says as ever read.
Yeah, okay. So your recommendation, we discuss each one?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
So would that for consensus?
Well, we'll just discuss this particular structure. My concern is that there's been no change. I mean, even though he's got a dumpster, the owner's got a dumpster out there, there's been no change, and you know, I don't know how many extensions we're going to give, so...
When was the permit pulled for the demolition?
It was over the summer, and he had initially said he was going to do it the 4th of July weekend, and that didn't happen. He was waiting on some utility disconnects. As I said, we haven't heard from the property owner, so I'm not sure where he's at on those disconnects.
So you don't know if it's been disconnected or not?
We have not heard.
I drove by this house about 45 minutes ago, call it an hour ago. The dumpster's no longer there. The house is absolutely horrid. I'm sure there's rodents in there, the vines are all the way up in the north side. I invite anybody to drive by it. I reviewed our meeting of August 13th, where the gentleman came in, says, "All I'm waiting for are my utility disconnects," and there was a little bit of a problem there. I should have them next week, and he said, "In fact, I'm leaving this meeting now to see if they came out and did it today." That was over 60 days ago, nothing's happened. It's time that we, we've given them two extensions. In May, we gave them 90 days till August 13th, from May 14th to August 13th. We caved and gave them another 60 days, nothing's happened. I think this one has to go. And it is, look at the neighborhood, nice neighborhood, this is a horrible cancer on that street. I invite anybody to drive by it. First house, first or second house, south of Spruce on the east side on Washington, it's an eyesore.
So just say if we did move forward with the demolition, how long will it take?
It would be at least a month, because we have a number of steps that we have to take in terms of environmental inspections, and we have to go through the utility disconnect process and get a bid out and get a contract awarded.
I'm in favor moving forward with the demolition.
Me too.
So we have a consensus to move forward, Mr. Dediki?
Yeah.
I guess three, if we had three, we're ready.
Okay, the next property is 1605 Terry. This one, again, was given an extension. When they came in August, they'd already made significant improvements, and as of this date, all the improvements that we needed have been completed. They do still need to get a front stoop on there, which they are working on. That wasn't one of the items that was on our list for criteria, though, so everything that we had listed out has been completed.
Should be taken off.
So we have a consensus to take this one off?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 514 Lynn. Again, this one had changed ownership while we're in the process of it, and the new owners came in August. They were in the process of getting the repairs made, and as of now, all the repairs that we requested have been completed.
All right. Consensus to take this one off as well?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, 1021 Second Street. This property has changed ownership since the meeting in August. The new owner has gotten some permits. Roof permit has been issued, the roof has been installed, a plumbing permit has been issued, and the owner did indicate to staff that new windows will be installed within the next couple of weeks, and they're in the process of working on exterior painting. So this is as it stands today.
I think it looks a whole lot better, absolutely.
Who is the owner?
Are they here?
Wyper.
I don't believe he is here. It's an owner who has taken a couple of other demo properties and flipped them. He didn't come to the last meeting.
If we were to give an extension, what would be your recommendation as far as the number of days?
If you're going to give an extension, I would just make sure that it's one that you can keep consistent for any that you might give an extension to, so, you know, another 30 days or 60 days, whatever the Commission would find appropriate.
So the main thing is the painting, the painting of the exterior?
Yeah, so on this one, the roof is done.
The eaves and the soffits.
It's got to install some new windows.
Looks like a lot of the soffits and eaves have been repaired, and so this one, yeah, it's mainly the paint that needs to be completed.
What about the windows, the windows or...
We did, that was not one thing that was listed. They were not broken or boarded up or anything.
I would cross the street to that house.
Okay, okay.
They're there every day working. I have the red street phone, and I see them working every day.
I think we should take this one off the list, then.
Well, have they contacted you, Ms. Hurley?
Staff has been in contact with them, yes.
Did they ask for an extension, or...
I don't believe he specifically asked for an extension, just let us know that he's in the process of working on it.
If, let's say nothing would occur from this date forward, is that house acceptable now?
It wouldn't really meet the criteria of a dangerous structure, given that it's just paint that we're needing.
But is it an eyesore, is it, you know, within the parameters of what we can work in? Would, does this one pass code or not? I know, would...
Given that it's an active construction site, when people, when folks are actively working on a home, and there's an active permit, we can tell that there is work being done. This is not something that we would cite if it were just another property that we saw.
And I do understand that. My question is, if no one did, raised another finger to work on this house, and it's exactly as it is today, is that an acceptable house? If the answer is yes, I want to take it off the list. If the answer is no, I want to give them another third days or 60 days. But I don't want to say, well, they're working on it, so it's going to get done.
It would depend what criteria we're valuing against. Property maintenance?
It's your criteria.
Property maintenance, no. The dangerous structures that we evaluate our demolition properties based on, it would not qualify for that.
But, but we do have the authority to...
We can write it up for property maintenance violations.
I mean, we can take properties for property maintenance, is that correct?
Yes. Not for demolition, but we can cite those through our code enforcement process.
At least the painting that you had indicated before, it still hasn't been resolved yet, correct?
They're in the process of it. They've got a good portion of the first floor.
I understand that, but they're not complete with that, correct?
Correct, it's not complete.
So I support a 30-day extension.
If it's not, if it's not an unsafe structure anymore, I think we should take it off and let it be a code violation otherwise, maintenance violation.
I think it's initially wasn't this dangerous and had these other aspects of appearance and image, and I think it just need that last thing or two that's on the list, I just think needs to be corrected before we take it off the list, but that's me.
I'm in favor of 30 days.
If you put it on 30 days, it's going to be back here again for another extension. You're not going to be able to complete it in 30 days. Secondly, we're moving into winter, not spring or summer. We've already experienced some cold days. We've had a few of them in the mornings where you could not paint, spray paint or brush paint because of the temperature. So, you know, take some other stuff into consideration. The house doesn't look that bad when you drive by it. Fixing the stoop and the shingles on it made a great big difference. So I'd say, you know...
So when does it become eligible to be cited for maintenance, a maintenance problem?
For property maintenance, there's, honestly, there's nothing on it right now that we would really cite for property maintenance. Again, it's in the middle of being painted, so it's not something that we would cite for property maintenance.
So there's no property maintenance. So do we have a consensus to take it off, or 30 days?
Take it off.
Take it off.
Take it off.
Mr., wait, hold on. Is Mr. Burdette or you?
Yeah, I got to jump up here real quick.
It's your property?
No.
No, he's the building contractor.
I do want to report to the Commission that we did get a call last week from a plumbing contractor who was doing some work at this property, but when they returned to finish what they were doing, there was other work that was done that they did not do. My staff has not had a chance to follow up with the owners yet to see if there's unlicensed contractors doing work on this property or not, so I just wanted to make aware.
So, in your opinion, there are some issues?
Yeah, we haven't been able to substantiate it or, you know, verify it, but yes, we had a, and I'm sorry, I don't have the names of the contractors who called, but the plumbing contractor did a call and said, "I did this, but I did not do this water either," and just want to let you know staff is going to try and follow it up.
So is it still considered an unsafe structure?
Not based on the criteria that's set out in state statute. What's set out in state statute, we're not allowed to consider any interior work, it's strictly exterior issues that we consider.
When we first put it on...
So those would be building code issues that Mr. Burdette is mentioning?
I would deal with those in a normal course.
Separate, that's a separate thing.
But when we put this initially on, we identified it in February and March, then we had our first meeting, we gave an extension in May, was it because it was unsafe at that time?
It was really more blighted. The definition, it's more dangerous, unsafe, blighted, yeah.
So we're talking blighted, we're not talking unsafe.
More blighted, right.
So are we still in a somewhat blighted situation? I'm not recommending bulldozing this thing, but do we still kind of hold our feet to the fire a little bit, say, "Please finish it, we want you to finish it." We don't want to bulldoze it, but we don't want it to, we've actually given it six months already, and each time we're promised that, yes, it'll be done 90 days, it'll be done in 60 days.
Well, again, this one did change ownership right around that August meeting, so this is a different owner. And again, you know, that's for the Commission to decide if that's something that you want to keep it on the list for, or to re-move it.
So I recommend 30, you said 30. The other three Commissioners, would you say take it off the list?
Take it off.
Yeah, I'm for keeping it on the list, not for rolling the bulldozers, but let's follow up and see what they're doing, and let's try to make contact with them.
Consensus for 30 days, bring it back in 30 days.
Okay. The next one is 305 North Second Street. There are active permits for interior renovations and siding, and there has been no visible change since the August meeting.
Have you had contact with the owners?
We have not.
I think this falls under the category of the 905 Washington, which was the first home we discussed this evening, so I'm in favor of moving forward with the demolition.
I'm not. Structurally, I don't see a thing wrong with it. The roof is good. The only thing, I can see a little blistering paint on the trim board underneath the eve. It doesn't need painting from what I can see. You've got two different colors on there, but there's nothing in color that says you had the same color on the house.
What was it cited for, you have it already, what was it cited for?
Yeah, the items that were listed that needed to be complete, repair and replace all exterior walls and siding, repair and replace all soffits and eaves, repair and replace all windows and doors, and remove all peeling paint and repaint the entire structure.
Can I ask you, Horace and Julie, why are we replacing all the windows? The glass is not broken.
They, when, if you look at the picture from May, there were a number, and I only quoted one picture from each timeframe, but in May, when we first put it on the list, there were a number of missing windows. There was a partially completed addition on the back that had only been framed in, had sat that way for over, well, over a year, so... Between May and August, there was some work done in terms of replacing windows and finishing out that addition a little bit, but since August, there's been no visible change that we can tell.
Well, they've got a new electrical service piped in, it's not hooked up yet, so the man has invested some money, and not knowing what his income is or what his means are, I would be very hesitant to come in and tearing down a piece of good-looking property.
How good-looking is it? Because we said siding, replace and repair all exterior walls and sightings, soffits and eaves, repair, it does, I agree, it doesn't look, looking at it, it doesn't look that bad, but it was cited for those deficiencies, and then those are the two that concern me most.
Well, I've got faith in human nature, knowing that he's made it this far, he'll complete the other side.
So do you recommend 30 days, keeping it in the same group?
I'd like to say something. I drove by this house again in the last hour, hour and a half. There are new windows. The rest of, there's a pile of rocks in the alley, it's been there quite a bit, gone around back. I don't know if the electrical service is hooked up or not, there's a couple meters there, one's been torn off the wall. My problem is, we gave them 90 days in May, say, "You need to do this," and people come up, "Oh, yes, we're going to do it." Come to August, still basically did something, then in August, this is exactly where we were in August, and we said, I think the property owner was here, I remember, "I will, we've got 60 days to take care of it, yes, yes, we'll do everything." There hasn't been one finger raised in that 60 days. We gave them this extension. If this is the initial thing, I would have no problem extending it, but I just feel we're getting played, and especially if the owner hasn't been in contact with us. And if the owner was here to kind of explain their story, do it, but I'm not going to make an assumption. We've given the owner every opportunity, and somehow, the most, if I'd give anything, it'd be 30 days, and I expect the owner to really make a move and get some explanation, but I don't know if I'll even go with that. But I definitely can't give 60 days without, that just, that'll take it to Christmas and everyone say, "Well, I can't do anything in March, this thing will be a year and a half on the...
I'd like to associate myself with Commissioner Priceinger's comments, and I recommend a 30-day extension, and we'll see what, if there's anything done in those 30 days. That's all I want to give at this point.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Yep, consensus for 30 days.
Okay, the next one is 326 Osage. There is an active permit for electrical work and interior renovations. The windows have been replaced. The main item that we're waiting on is the roof to be replaced, that we listed out that the entire roof needed to be replaced. From the front end of the house, it's looking pretty good. The bottom picture is from the back end, and that roof on the back portion of that house still has not been repaired or replaced.
Have you heard from the property owner on this one?
I don't believe we've had any contact with the property owner.
So they replaced part of the roof and not the rest?
Right.
That makes no sense at all.
I say 30 days.
30, yeah, that's true, it doesn't make sense, but to be consistent, I think, with what we've been discussing, there is work ongoing, so we can, I could support 30 days.
Do we have a consensus?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, the next one is 400 North Fifth Street. There is an active permit for siding, roof and windows, however, there's been no visible work done since August, that the stairway on the side was removed just prior to the meeting in August, and then there's been nothing else done since that time.
Have you been in contact with the owner?
They haven't had any contact with us.
I think you've got two of them here in the audience.
I think somebody's here, yeah, wants to discuss with us.
All right, Mark Swol. I am representing the property owner, Brian Zoski, this particular property. There has been some progress, I haven't got any pictures to send you, but if that door over the stairwell was...
The siding to get matched was very difficult. We ordered the siding, I have the siding to do most of the repairs that we need. There were some framing members under that door that were rotten and repaired, so that's been kept in and sealed. I have all the fascia material already there, I've got a primer paint on it. The logistical thing that I'm having difficulties with is I'm not really good on a 30-foot ladder. I'm trying to get a lift. I had one picked out for two weekends ago, blew a hose, it's being repaired, hopefully I'll have it this weekend. I do have two new windows, which are the only two that are cracked in the entire place. I've got those in place. So we've got all the materials that we need except for some roofing, and I've actually contacted the roofing inspector and talked to her about, because it said overall replacement, which is not required, because she looked back and permits, the roof's less than 10 years old. There is a valley there on that side where the siding meets the roof. We're going to take that siding off and reflash that valley, and hopefully that'll take care of that problem. Had paint, but the paint walked off luckily. 30 gallons of paint was stolen from the property in the process of doing all these other stuff. We have maintained the upkeep of the grass on the outside of the building. If you, you don't have a picture of the large end on the, on the south end of that building, the eve was wide open from the ridge line up, or from the roof line up, that is, the insulation has been filled into that void, and I've got some siding started there. Again, I'm working on a ladder. It's very tough, it's slow time-consuming, and I don't have a budget. I'm working on a pretty low budget here, so. I do have, like I said, all the materials I believe that I need. I don't know what I'm going to need as far as roofing goes when I get to that point of it. I have to reacquire $600 worth of paint. Other than that, we are still steadily trying to make some progress.
And given the 30-day extension, do you think you'll be able to make any progress?
30, yeah. My concern is, that's a big project, and it looks the same as it did. I mean, it's a terrible looking building in the neighborhood.
But that's all pictures. I've got some new ones if you want to see them.
You got some new ones?
The thing I would like for you guys to consider is, we're working on this...
Please state your, yeah, let's hear your name.
My name's Dakota Toon. I live at 806 South Esalen 8. I'm a really good friend of Mark's, and we're working on trying to get this done. Thing I'd like you guys to really consider, we both have full-time jobs. I work 60-plus hours a week. Mark, Derek himself, is right there along with me. We're doing this in our free time, Saturday, Sunday. We dedicate as much time as we can to it, trying to get it fixed, and whenever it comes down to it, there's only so much time in the day. And we also have families.
We do have, sorry, on a side note, the actual, the property owner is coming back, I think, 31st, and is slated to be here for a week, and pretty much most of his time is going to be there to get to this building as well, and he's got a construction background, so he should make a lot of progress on top of what we're doing, too.
When is he coming back?
It's 31st, was the last word I've heard from him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate what you've done, Mr. Swol and Mr. Toon. I know you gave me a call today. What concerns me is, one, you're not the property owners, you're the contractors, if you will, and I appreciate that you're speaking for them. But I reviewed our meeting of August 13th, you spoke then, Mr. Swol, you weren't, I don't think you spoke, Mr. Toon, I don't think you were here. And, you know, it's, the video's readily available, and I don't think much has been done or anything's been done, and it was all going to be done in that 60 days, no problem. I drove by it an hour and a half ago, and I invite anyone to drive from Fourth Street West on Osage on the second floor, there was a huge, I'd say 40-square-foot hole in the, up on the second floor. Now it's partially covered with Tyvek, but there's still 10, 12, 14-square-foot hole there.
Needed a longer ladder.
And whatever else. This is still a cancer on that neighborhood, it's been a cancer for a long time, but in August, you said, "You give me 60 days, I'll have this thing cleaned up." There has been nothing that has improved it.
I'm not sure...
And you're still not the owners. I wish the owners were here.
Well, he will be, he will be.
Yeah, but he hasn't been for, we had this, you know, listed since March or so, and the owner's the one that really has the investment, and it's just very troubling to me, and I know it's troubling to the neighborhood and troubling to the city.
That's your job to be troubled. That's your job, that's your job to be troubled.
Yeah.
It's our job to do what we can to help it. We have made some progress.
But in August, we heard the same thing, and it hasn't...
Would you lend a hand and come out and help?
If I owned the property, if you couldn't get it done, I'm not slighting, you know, I appreciate that you're working 60 hours a week and you have a family, but if I owned the property, I'd hire somebody that, you know, that's what they can do.
You wouldn't want to work in class budget?
That's...
What?
It's all good.
But it's not your property. We're good, we're good, we're good.
We need to get off that.
The other thing I want you to consider is, like I said before, finding the siding to match this was a difficult job, and we had to order that siding, and it took almost a month for the siding to come in, so. It's not all the fact that we haven't done any work, we've been waiting, like I said, logistically on some things. The lift is huge. I mean, I have a lift for a day, and majority of that, you can see, and the pictures, I have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So my question to you is, 30 days, would you be able to make some major progress?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I've got longer ladders, if nothing else. I've already got some longer ladders that I'm looking at. I'm looking, I've got 24-foot ladders right now myself. I don't need any longer ladders than that.
Bring it back and the owner knows.
I don't think 30 days will accomplish it, but well, we see Mark's differences in 30 days.
I can show you a difference in the pictures I have right now, Mr. I mean, you drove by, that gave me, oh, it is filmed.
I just drove by it a few minutes ago.
Well, you don't want to do 30 days, let's do 60. That would give them more than sufficient time.
I think 60 days, let's do it. They've been spending money on it.
Mr. Swol, can I ask, let's say the Commission does mention 60 days, what do you expect to have done in 60 days?
I expect to have about everything but the paint, and the only reason I'm saying but the paint is because I can have all the paint prep work done, but I got to watch the temperature of that timeframe.
So you'll have a staircase that...
Well, I don't know that we're planning on repairing this staircase. More than likely, we're going to close in that door.
I hate to walk out that second floor door.
Well, that's what I just said, more than likely, we're going to close in that door altogether, but that would be a heck of a step.
That's the other one door there.
Yeah, there's another, another egress on the other side of the building, so that door's not required. I don't understand, so...
Yes, sir.
If we're going to do an extension, could I ask that we do 30 days just to look at it again, and then maybe extend it just to keep everything on the same timeline?
Yes, yes.
That's fine. And the hole in the back will be completely covered?
Yeah, that should be...
This is frustrating, yeah.
Longer ladder.
So do we have a consensus for 30 days?
Yes.
Thank you, Professor, thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Okay, the final property is 787 Shawnee, and this one, all the repairs have been completed on it.
Okay, let's take it off.
This is a great example of what this program's set to do.
Yep, that's good.
We get them and they fix it up, and they've done an outstanding job on this one.
30 days, consensus to take it off.
Take it off.
All right. All right, so next item on you.
We have a motion, have to do a motion.
Yeah, and I'll have all your consensus in a minute, so just make a motion to proceed with the consensus that was made for the property.
Motion to proceed with the consensus?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with the consensus...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with the consensus consensuses. Is that the word? Consensai consensuses on unsafe and dangerous structures as discussed.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero. Adopt resolution? Motion to adopt resolution?
We're not down. Open public hearing?
Oh, open public. Motion to open public hearing.
So I move we open public hearing to consider unsafe or dangerous structure.
Second.
Motion seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero. Final open meeting, open hearing. Staff and public comments?
Mike? Mr. Mayor, commissioners, this is a little different than the previous exercise. This is related to a fire at the duplex two twenty-eight and two thirty Ottawa Street. This is a duplex and the reason we are here this evening is the city has passed an ordinance that requires insurance companies. If the value of the property is damaged seventy-five percent or greater, that the city obtains fifty percent of the insurance proceeds. And the city is allowed to use those proceeds to basically to address the problem caused by the damage structure. In this case, the city has received insurance proceeds related to the damage of this address of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This particular, the ordinance is set up at this process is managed through the Building Inspection Department, Halber Dennis here. If you have questions related to this, it's important to note that of this duplex, the half of it is actually currently occupied. It's found to be safe to do so. The other half, the property owner obtained a permit with fire was June twenty-fifth. They obtained a building permit on July twenty-second and have been working on a lot of the issues. They have been in contact with Halber Dennis and our inspectors. I believe the property owner is here, the CD. If you have questions of this, staff recommendation that they be granted an extension to further their work. Staff recommendation was ninety days, but I'm sure that the commission, they find a better number. That's what will be fine with us.
Questions or comments?
Ninety days sounds fine to me.
Is the owner here?
Mr. Patterson?
Oh, okay.
Sir, do you have anything to add or? Do you have anything to add or?
Uh, yeah.
Come to the podium.
The fire was really only okay. The fire was really in an upstairs bedroom and.
Mr. Patterson, you're supposed to, Mr. Patterson, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name's Larry Patterson. I live at twelve oh five South Fifteenth Street, Leavenworth, Kansas. And I own this duplex and there was a fire. It's it's a pretty nice building and they even got fireplaces in both sides. It's three bedrooms. There was a fire in one bedroom. And it was contained to really the ceiling mostly. I've got a building permit to redo it because I'm I'm actually a builder. I built the houses on Patterson Street. And I built all my own houses and me and my son have been working on it since the fire. I I have worked on it every day since the fire. I worked on it all day today, Saturdays and Sundays. And I'm ready. I've met all my inspections and I'm ready for the electrician to do some wiring so I can finish and sheet rocking. And then I'm going to resand some hardwood floors and put carpet in it and it'll be done.
Do you think ninety days will be sufficient time for you to get those those final repairs done?
If I keep working as hard as I have been, yeah, I think so.
I mean, is it realistic?
Yes, it's realistic.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
So we have a consensus for ninety days?
No, we have.
No, we have to close the public hearing. I move that we.
You should probably see if there is any other public comment.
Any other comments?
Any other public comments? All right, motion closed.
Thank you.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-two thirty-eight and we need to put a timeframe on that.
And they're just giving the owner ninety days.
Okay, and with ninety day extension.
Second.
All right, motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero.
Mr. Mayor, can I request a five minute break to get some video material, AV material on the screen?
I want to thank the commission. I want to thank Howard.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good guy to work with and appreciate it. Thank you. Consider me.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, we're going to take a five minute recess. We are now back in session. Next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider the adoption of a redevelopment project plan, North Gateway Redevelopment District Project Area Three.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. We're five zero. We are now in the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and commission, I'm going to go through what we're doing here, give you a little bit of historic background on this district and talk a little bit about the project. I did want to let you know that the developers are here and I'll ask them to come forward in a little bit to talk about a little more about the project. I think it's important to note where we got and so it's so the public and the commission and everybody understands what it means by TIP project number three. In two thousand and eleven, the city commission put in place a TIP district. That's a tax increment financing district. In very simple terms, and it's not a simple concept, but in simple terms, the the district has boundaries. Seventh Street on the west, Pawnee Street on the south, Fourth Street on the east and Metropolitan Avenue on the north. At the time that you put it in place, you take a snapshot of the values of all the properties, the property tax. So that there's no loss in revenue to the school district, the county and the city. That revenue remains in place. What the increment does, what the TIP does, is any new growth in property tax is captured for use within that district for development. So the very first project we had, you'll remember, this is the corner of Fourth and Metropolitan in two thousand and nine. This is the very corner. This is the body shop. So the first project the city did was hotel project number one. That would be right here. And so the developer at that time builds the hotel. Hotels is a commercial use, which is appraised, first of all, at a higher level than residential and it's a vast improvement. So that creates a lot of new revenue, new property tax that invests back into the project. One thing to note on the first two projects, and I'll get to the second one in a second, is the city fronted money on both of these. The city purchased the residential properties for the first hotel and we issued notes to do that. So we had debt and we paid ourselves back with the hotel revenue, but we did issue debt upfront. Just a couple of years ago, we did TIP project number two. So you in within the district, every time you do a project, it has its own project, which brings us to project three tonight. But going back, project two was the second hotel, the Town Place Suites. This was the same process. The developer asked for funds upfront to purchase the property, make site improvement costs. So again, the city issued debt. We borrowed against the revenue that would come from this new hotel and that was all covered in the development agreement. So those two projects are in place. The TIP district is still alive. In two thousand and eighteen, we started working with a team from Cadence Development. Before that, we had worked with approximately half a dozen other developers with the eye on taking the next TIP project somewhere in this area. This is the area where there's a vacant restaurant right here, a dog and cat clinic, a body shop, Commander's Inn, Armed Forces Bank. We didn't know what it would look like, but we had developers interested because of the success of the hotels. The hotels brought people, they brought activity, they brought renewal to that area. So in working with other developers, the hurdle that we saw from the very beginning was this block right here. There are multiple property owners and they are properties that had a high asking price. It's in a TIP district. That's standard, but also you have a hotel, a large restaurant, a successful veterinary clinic. So that's a good thing, but it was a hurdle for developers because of the price of accumulating that property. Working with Cadence Fishman team, they originally approached us with a redevelopment project for just the bank property. That was that's easier. There's only one property owner and they would they would focus on on that project. And at that time, they were also working on a project to renovate the Fort Gate shops. That's off the table. That was purchased by another another entity. In discussions with the city commission, with residents, with the police department notably, our number one priority in this whole TIP district was the Commander's Inn. There were criminal considerations, blighting considerations, appearance and image considerations. So we brought the team in from Cadence and we said, we're excited about your project here. What can we do? What will it take for you to add the Commander's Inn project property to your project? So they went back and they put together a project plan. The project plan before you tonight is this blue shaded area. So this includes the vacation of Sixth Street to turn this into one one total development. The project from the developer has a price tag of just over seven million dollars in costs. Everything from site acquisition, demolition. There is a very substantial stormwater issue that they're going to deal with here and that includes also building four separate buildings. So one question is, are we going to know what goes in there tonight? And the answer to that is no, and I'll explain to you why. The first two projects were single entity projects. There was a hotel developer building a hotel. There was no contracts he needed to get signed, no tenants he needed to sign up. This is the first retail driven TIP project we've done in the last ten years. The other one being Zek is a TIP and then the Downtown Hotel. All the developer coming to us, the hotel developer, the owner of Zek Ford. So I'll bring the developers up in a minute, but the process here is a little bit different because in order to secure financing, they need the TIP project plan in place. And then in order to get the tenants to sign on, they need project financing. I'll let them share more if they'd like to. And the so then the the first statutory step is that this plan is put together and submitted to the city's planning commission. And the planning commission needs to find that this does not conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. So this was presented to the planning commission and by a six oh vote, they found that that was the case and forwarded it on to the city commission. This is just the first consideration tonight. This item would come back on November twelfth for second consideration approval. In the plan that they have, there is a site plan. Make sure I get the site plan here. The site plan is a requirement of the TIP project plan, but does not necessarily indicate what the final project will look like. And as much as they don't have the tenants at this point signed up, they don't know who's coming. This was this is where they're headed, but we don't know. They've indicated in the planning commission minutes that this would be their sort of their preferred layout, but that has to follow. This does not in any way show elevations, show the requirements in the development regulations for landscaping. This has not, there'd be some traffic studies that have to be done or some traffic impact work. I hesitate to use the word study. KDOT would be involved with Fourth Street there. There remains quite a bit of work on the development side. But by by statute, the TIP project plan has to include a site plan to the best of the developer's ability of what will be reflected when they're done. So that's that's the that's what you have here with this site plan. The development agreement, so if there's any questions about, are we talking about the incentive package that the city is going to offer? Benchmarks, timelines, that is all part of the development agreement, which we've been working diligently with the developer and their team. That will also be on the agenda for November twelfth. We did do a pre-development agreement in May where they sort of indicated to the commission what they needed and incentives to make this work with taking on the site, the Commander's Inn, acquisition and demolition. So that information was presented in May and we've been working on a final development agreement that is substantially larger than that pre-development agreement. So what you're doing tonight is accepting this as a TIP project plan so that it can be officially included as a as a project that is available for TIP financing. We do have the developers. I'll ask them to to come up. We have Kevin Lee and Justin Kaufman and Trip Ross. Kevin with the legal team and Justin and Trip with the developer. I'll let them talk a little bit about what it is. They've been to the planning commission and explain this, but I'll let them, I'll turn it over to them briefly.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Kevin Lee, Post Nellie Law Firm, appearing today on behalf of Fort Gate Properties LLC and Cadence Commercial Real Estate. As was mentioned, also have Justin Kaufman and Trip Ross, who are the principals of the developer, running point on this project. Paul did excellent job providing the background and outlining the specific request, the narrow scope of that that we have before you this evening. As I believe all or most on the commission are aware, we've now closed on on the entire site, including both Armed Forces Bank and the Commander's Inn property in demonstration of our commitment to the project. I think that we've we've closed on the site and so now we did that notwithstanding. One thing that wasn't mentioned was the premium that comes along with that. We're talking about sites that have existing productive assets. So while they may not be the highest and best use for those properties, they are existing assets and it's a premium that you have to pay and come in, even though the plan is ultimately to demolish those and replace them with a better use, right? So we did go ahead and decide to go ahead and close on the property. The site's now in the hands of Cadence, a sophisticated developer. We continue to work through not only this public private partnership process with the city, but also in advancing our discussions with potential tenants and users. So I know that that's something that's very important to you all and that you're anxious to see what exactly is going to get built out here. So we are not in a position tonight to announce names or or specific users for the site. What we can say is that it's going to be, and we have every intention to bring forward a high quality commercial development, much higher and better used than than what's out there today. And it's something, as Paul mentioned, that's going to be substantially similar, we expect, to the plan that that's been presented with respect to the mix of uses and and also the layout. I can let these guys touch on it a little more if they want, but by way of illustration, we're currently in negotiations with a number of convenience store and fast casual restaurant users. We also have discussions ongoing with a potential daycare provider, which I know would be a huge win for everyone involved, given the proximity to the site. So none of those are are binding yet. We can't say names. There's it's common to have non-disclosure agreements as as we go through these negotiations, but but that's where we're at today. I think that with respect to next steps, the only thing I wanted to reiterate on a few comments that Paul hit on is that this is just one step in in a bigger overall process. It's it's we're following statutory requirements at at this point, but we have a development agreement ongoing with with your staff that we're negotiating. I have every reason to believe that that will be in final form and that will be back before you with that document on November twelfth. In addition to that and and an update on users, hopefully at that time, we also plan to prepare an updated colored concept rendering that we would bring back and show to you guys to kind of add a little bit of flavor and context to what we envision this site will look like with respect to landscaping and and those types of things. So that being said, we, you know, happy to be here, appreciate the opportunity and stand for any questions that you have.
Any questions?
I wish we had a grocery store. We've got so many new apartments up there. I mean, the the big loss right by the river there are huge. They're going to they're going to have a lot of people living, not just in the hotels, you know, or short term, but long term. And so my concern is has always been about having a grocery store in North Leavenworth. So that's just my comment. I don't, you know, I know that's not your.
We still have more TIP district to the south, so hopefully that that'll fill out.
We just, we really, really want to have something like that up there to add to the mix that we have in that community.
Sure, your comments noted and we will not rule anything out as as we're considering users coming forward.
The daycare is one that I guess I have a question about.
So the daycare, and I meant to mention this, Taylor Ted, our assistant city manager, led the Cadence team to Fort Leavenworth.
Right.
And they did a a day tour and. And they did a, a day tour, and by far, their number one takeaway with that was daycare, daycare, daycare. They have more than, they have more than a hundred families on the waiting list, and they, so that's why, that's the emphasis on daycare. I meant to mention, there was a couple of things in my long spiel that I did not mention, but that was one of them, that, that was driven specifically by a need in the community and mentioned by Fort Leavenworth.
Okay.
Couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for doing this, I know it's a big investment. Thank you especially for the removal of the Commander's Inn, which has been problematic in this town for quite a few years, and really, really manifested itself even more when we had decent hotels finally come in, and what, what a problem that was. Appreciate the investment that's being made, seven million dollars, and know, none of our money is being fronted for that. There are possibly incentives down the road that you earn, but none of the taxpayers' money is being fronted, we're, as we had to do with the hotels, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, there are no plans to issue any debt.
Yeah, there'll be no debt for it.
Related to this, this project, the city will not be on the hook for any, any issue of debt. It's all, it's all reimbursement on eligible costs.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for that. I know that we did a comprehensive plan, I think Commissioner Dedeky and I were both on the commission then, possibly right when I came on, I know Commissioner Dedeky worked on it a long time. It's kind of a vision for the northeast corridor, if you will. And at that time, there's also, we had, we stood up a group called the Lewis and Clark Research Institute. And that was something that the grandiose plans were, that whole area, we're going to have defense contractors in, we're going to have labs, incubators, just all kinds of things. And the reality is that no defense contractors were going to come, if they needed to come here, they'd rent space. And so that plan really didn't come into play, into play, because it, it just wouldn't work. But that was a vision, it wasn't necessarily locked in concrete. And then we came at the first hotel, and we just, in fact, just did the ribbon cutting five years ago, first of October, so the first hotel's been there five years now, but when we first built that, that was actually in contravention of that redevelopment plan, was it not?
They had, there, there was some language about a, a convention center, and maybe a high-end hotel somewhere on the site at some point, but nothing quite like what we put in there.
Yeah, so it's kind, a little bit in contravention, so that northeast comprehensive plan is a very fluid document, it's not, we're locked in concrete, you have to do it. And I think what you're doing here, one, I, if you're putting seven million dollars in something, it's, I, I think it's going to look nice, and obviously, the people are going to make, make that kind of investment, want a return on their money, and curb appeal means a lot, and product or retail space, whatever, that people will use, so people can recoup their money, sounds good. Obviously, we don't know what those might be, we all have our preferences, but we're not the ones behind those. And I appreciate what you've done, I'm sure there's going to be people that, you know, have some questions, concerned, but I just wanted to state that, that this, the redevelopment plan that we have had, we have tweaked that or moved to different times when different opportunities show up, specifically these hotels, which didn't really fit in the original plan of that. Because Lewis and Clark Research Center, after we stood it up, we really spent down every nickel of it, and I don't want to say it didn't get anything out of it, but no, I will say we got nothing out of it, and just, and we shut it down once the money was dried up.
Thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know that the planning commission has dealt with this and voted, I think, six to zero to, to move forward with this redevelopment project, but I think I'm aware of, I am aware of one of the commissioners have, one of the commissioners on the planning commission having some concerns with respect to some aspect of this, and I think he's in the audience tonight, is he going to be able to come up and, and talk about this?
Yeah, after commission comments or any questions?
Well, I'll have some comments, but I think I, I, as one commissioner, wanted to hear his comments first. All right, anybody else?
No.
All right, yep, feel free. Yes, sir.
Oh yeah, hello, my name is Scott Cunningham, I'm from 211 Arch Street here in Leavenworth, and just wanted to come and talk about this project here. And the main thing I'm talking about is what Paul Kramer was mentioning also, that is the comprehensive land use plan, 2010, which is essentially the overall strategic plan for the town of Leavenworth. What I try to talk of tonight is to recommend, or, or to endorse the project three for the Tiff region, but with a condition on it that the city doesn't issue just a blank check for the project without basically getting a guarantee that the appearance of the project would essentially adhere to that which is stipulated here in the comprehensive plan. We have a couple areas in the city that we do have, that are important enough that we address what the appearance of them is. That's the historic core of the downtown area, and then some of the prosperity quarters, Fourth Street, Metropolitan, whatever. This one obviously falls into the gateway Metropolitan. So what I'm recommending is that we make the approval conditional on the appearance of the project, so that it is complementary to its surroundings in the town, as stated here in the land use plan. Now, in the land use plan, just, just for reference, it's all on page 61, which is the community appearance standards. And the goals overall for the community are to develop a vibrant community with a welcoming image to attract, an attractive physical appearance that celebrates the community heritage through quality new development and appropriate redevelopment, which I think this would categorize that, and preservation of historic structures. On page 62, it addresses specifically the northern gateway area, which is the Metropolitan area, fourth and Metropolitan. Redevelopment master plan includes strategies intended to improve the visual appearance of the gateway. This includes setbacks, vegetation, mentions a trail, which I'm not sure we're going to talk about here. But the design guidelines address the streetscape and the built environment, all of which would contribute greatly to Leavenworth's sense of place. So I would say that this would be considered a redevelopment, and I would just, came here tonight to speak to, to support the project, but with the conditional, the, the condition that the city makes sure that comprehensive land use plan standards for these key areas, this being one of them, i- is taken into account, and, and that's taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, to Mr. Cunningham's point, like landscaping is something that's fairly objective, that, you know, there has to be certain guidelines for landscaping, that, that would hold true for this project, would it not?
Yeah, we have, this project would be held to what's in the current development regulations, the adopted development regulations, which has landscape requirements in that, but they would be held to, the comprehensive land use plan is a guide where the development regulations are the rules. So, they would be required to adhere to the adopted development regulations in their entirety.
So landscaping definitely be part of it. The other ones that Mr. Cunningham spoke of, I completely agree with, but some of them sound so subjective, they're not, they're not real clear, you know, adheres to the strategy, and, and I guess we're charged to make that decision, does it adhere to the strategy? And there may be five different decisions, or five different opinions on that strategy on this commission, and it might be thirty different opinions on that strategy in this room. So, that's not as definitive, but I guess we're charged with making that interpretation, am I correct?
Exactly right. It's a project-by-project basis. We don't have what's commonly used, we used to have a Fourth Street overlay district, would, would have a second or a separate set of requirements, building materials, setbacks. We don't have any existing overlay districts, we just have what's in the development regulations. If you look at the hotels, they were looked at individually, and I don't believe any of those have any unique architectural characteristics. That doesn't mean you can't look at those type things, but it's not in the development regulations.
Go as well.
Mr. Cunningham? I'm going to save my questions until after.
Oh, okay, somebody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is John Karish, I live at 2404 South 15th Street. I have the privilege of serving you and the rest of the Leavenworth community on, on the Leavenworth Planning Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission, and I wish to add a few comments to this evening's public hearing. I did have some, some comments laid out ahead of time, but based on Mr. Kramer's comments earlier, I'm going to modify those, so if I get a little broken up, forgive me. During the September 9th Planning Commission, the developer for this project provided us with what I call a programming plan, which is what you see before you. We have those same plans presented to the planning commission. It shows the intended use of the site. I understand that this was, it is my understanding at the time that this was not going to be the final site plan that would be presented and agreed upon between the developer and the city. However, just finding out from the developer and, and Mr. Kramer, it sounds like now, this particular plan is pretty much set in stone, that they're moving forward with such a, a quick pace. So I'm a little concerned about that aspect of it. Please know that as we go forward with my concerns, I'm not opposed to the idea of a redevelopment for this area, or the intended uses, I am just opposed to how this is being arranged on the site, and how it doesn't pay any attention to our intent of the comprehensive plan, or the master plan efforts that we've done in the past. From a design perspective, this is no different than what we have successfully implemented along Fourth Street, Commercial Corridor, Eisenhower. Just from a design perspective, I believe this does not represent the full intent that we want for a gateway community, for, for our, a gateway development for our community, since we do have an international presence with Fort Leavenworth, and the people that come and visit us. And having an ATM machine and a gas station on the corner is one of our welcome focal points, I think is missing the point. There are several other ways that we can, that, that these uses can be retained without making the ATM machine and the gas station a priority. And again, on that note, it was brought up to the planning commission's attention, that part of the agreement, correct me if I'm wrong please, but, that the bank would not agree to enter into this development unless they had an ATM machine on that corner. That was part of their requirements for agreeing to this, which was not brought to your attention. And I just wanted to say in that regards, that the Armed Forces Bank, which is owned by Dickinson Financial Corporation in Kansas City, Missouri, is not agreeing to this development moving forward unless they have this ATM machine. You know, we have another ATM machine at 20th and Spruce, so that kind of paints a picture for you of what this could look like with an ATM machine as our focal point at this intersection. I don't think this is the image we want to communicate to our international visitors. It is unfortunate that Dickinson Financial and the Armed Forces Bank believe that a self-funded advertisement is more important than supporting the future of our city, or by blatantly ignoring the vision of the Gateway District, which they so choose to do. Last week, I emailed you a quick design alternative, just a quick option as to how these uses could be combined into more cohesive development, based on my 25 years plus of urban design, landscape architecture, and construction. This alternative could easily flip-flop the ATM and the gas station with the business and, and restaurant uses. By just using a little bit of creativity and consideration of our city vision for the district, we can meet our goals, and those of the retail community, by grouping these buildings together, and also efficiencies in the infrastructure by combining these structures together. It would create more inviting social spaces, rather than a string of single-use structures geared towards the easy access of cash and gas on the corner. I just wanted to also add that by flipping these uses, we also create a message to our visitors and people visiting our community, that we want to say, welcome, come sit down in our restaurant on the corner and, and enjoy our social spaces, and check out Leavenworth has to offer as opposed to saying, come get your cash, come get your gas, and get out. So, in closing, I ask the city commission and city staff to not lose sight of our vision for this North Gate District, and please hold the developer accountable in creating a project that is worthy of a front entrance viewed by the entire world, and not just another commercial strip development, best suited for another area of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for me, I'm sorry?
Now, we were told as part of our read ahead package that the, the planning commission voted six to zero to approve the, approve this before it came to the city commission. Were you part of that?
Yes, and I voted in favor of it, because I was led to believe that this plan would be negotiated and would also have much more time to go into details of how it's laid out, but it was seemed to have brought to my attention this evening that now, just in a matter of less than a month, that this is the plan they're moving forward with, and there's, and there seems to be very little room for maneuvering or negotiating or changing that, is my understanding.
We, we don't have any, this has to go through DRC, this has to go through multiple steps before it's finalized, that'll be, you know, I, I don't know what the developer will come back with, if this is where they go, then we'll have to convert that, but there's, there's a lot of steps involved before anything is set in stone or concrete.
I'm sorry, did I, did I miss earlier, I thought you said, did I go this, hey, misdirection?
No, let me, let me speak to it, and, and I appreciate, agree with, with Paul, so it's, this is what we envision with respect to a general layout and, and mix of uses. It could certainly change slightly, it could change drastically, but this is one likely potential for, for this development. As, as Paul notes however, we are still absolutely subject to, to the planning and zoning process. So if and when we're coming back through, as, as users are identified, and we start to nail plans down, we are coming back through to, to both the planning commission and city council with preliminary development plan, final development plan, so on and so forth. And so, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to work through some of these items, and when we say final plan, we're still subject to all of your code requirements with respect to landscaping, and the, the level of detail that's shown in, in the plan set. What I wanted to, to reiterate is that this is, we're probably not looking at a drastic reconfiguration of, of like some of the items that you mentioned, of potentially moving other things, and there's a lot of other factors that come into play on that, as, as you know really well, with respect to getting users and what the market will bear, we have to account for parking requirements, not only by code, but what users want, and, and then just frankly visibility, right, is, is a huge issue for, for a lot of these guys. I, I think with respect to a few of the other comments that were made, with the plan's intent to improve visual appearance, I think that there's no question that, that when we're done with this thing, we are going to drastically improve the visual appearance from, from what you've got out there today. Again, I also want to hit home on the point that the planning commission did consider it, and with respect to the objective criteria in, in the comprehensive plan, which is the future land use designation for this site, that, that there was unanimous finding that it was consistent with, with that site. Commissioner Karish is correct, we, we do have an ATM that, that is going to go on the site, that is in fact going to happen and, and play out. And then I think the other thing is just, again, to reiterate, as Paul mentioned, that it's, it's one step, and we, we still are coming back through the entire full planning and zoning process as users come along, so.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're willing to negotiate, but don't expect a whole lot, because a drastic change, let me, let me finish, a drastic change from what's shown here, is why I'm interpreting that, because you're saying you're going to follow our landscaping.
Yeah, 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 so we're good, we're, we've got to come back.
I'm sorry, okay, I apologize.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming.
I'd like to say one thing, one, I want to thank Mr. Karish for serving on the Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission, I think, I know I appointed him for one of them, I don't know if I appointed you for both of them, and the expertise that he brings to the Planning Commission and the Preservation Commission is outstanding for the city, and thank you for that, and thank you for your input. Obviously, he knows a heck of a lot more than all five of us combined on something like this, but, but, thank you.
Is this public comment time?
Yes, ma'am, come on, please.
So, my name is Danielle Wells, I reside in this Tiff District, I live at 606 Pawnee Street. So anytime you guys are doing these projects, it greatly affects me, so please keep in mind that there are still people that live here. I did not prepare to speak tonight, because I wasn't sure what this plan encompassed. I would really, really appreciate if the remaining property owners, if we could be notified whenever things are happening, I know it's, it's public comment, and it's public record that these are happening, but I, I'm sure you guys have looked at the criminal records, and that's why the Commander's Inn was taken down. But two of these apartment complexes right here that are not being developed yet have high criminal activity constantly, and they're in my backyard. So, I mean, I would assume that that's going to affect what you're going to bring in, but just be mindful that people still live here, please, make it beautiful and make it great. My home was built in 1884, I really hope that you don't tear my house down eventually, I love my house. So... So, I don't know. I know that I'm at the subject of what you guys do because my house is in that district, so we still live there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. So any other comments?
Was Mr., is it Mr. Ross? Were you going to say something?
I was, and so, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for having us here. Glad to be here to discuss our project. My name is Trip Ross, my partner, Justin Kaufman, are the developers for our firm, Cadence. We also handle all the leasing, the management of our properties. And just to collectively respond to some of the comments, I was the one at the podium for the six oh vote at Planning Commission, and I was the one that said this plan will continue to evolve, and it will, and it has, and as we continue to get interest from users, the plan gets tweaked step by step, and landscaping gets added, pedestrian paths change. In an effort to be consistent in front of another elected body, this is the plan you're looking at tonight, but we have several more steps where other versions of this plan will come forward, and hopefully at that point we'll have commitments from users that will allow us to say their names, and you'll have a better sense for how this project will materialize. So just to address the comments from the planning commissioner, I want to be clear, we didn't misrepresent where the project was headed. This is a representation of uses and orientation. As it relates to the quality of the project, by inherent nature of these incentives, we need highest and best users, and we need them here for a long period of time in order to be reimbursed for the investment being made. So not only will we make the right choices up front, our management staff will maintain the property, will install landscaping and pedestrian areas and building materials and so on, and make sure that they're taken care of. They'll be installed at a high level of quality, and that will remain consistent. That allows the retailers and the other users within our project to achieve the level that we've underwritten and allow us to be reimbursed for the investment that we're making. It's just, it's an absolutely inherent component to pursuing incentives like this. So that responsibility is absolutely on our shoulders, and the structure of the incentives ensure that from your part.
But can we expect to see some of that specificity between now and the 12th of November when this comes back for second consideration? Because that's my big concern. I mean, looking at the site plan, I wasn't even aware of John's, well, I was aware of most of what John talked about, but I don't know if we have the time tonight to get into a big discussion about that particular corner. I mean, I could ask, it sounds like there's not going to be much flexibility there, you know, in terms of an ATM and a gas station. So, I mean, if that's going to be the case, I think the commissioners need to know that, but my concern is more what you talked about in terms of the overall appearance, building materials, just more detail. I've been involved as the school board president for the Fort Leavenworth School District for 10 years, three major capital projects, and I know we're dealing with a little bit different situation here, but by this time in the process, in terms of three weeks away from making a final decision, I would have, we would have more, you know, details in terms of what it's going to look like, you know, in terms of, we don't want all parking lots in concrete, et cetera. We want just what you talked about, but it's a matter of, it's not that, I don't, it's not that I don't trust this development company, because I do, but it's kind of our due diligence in terms of the verification aspect, and Mr. Cunningham mentioned putting subject to conditions. I'm not sure we want to do that, but I would like to feel very comfortable that we'll have something more in the next three weeks before we approve this.
And we can certainly work with staff to provide materials that help represent at a high level what the vision is for the site. And with that said, we have many more users circling this site than we have shown on the site plan.
Right.
And we can't go make commitments that would limit their ability to have a position on the site. And then also, these are all national, regional users that have their prototypes, and so we can't dictate what their building materials or the appearances are going to be.
But do you have coordination? I mean, if we're looking at this, I mean, is it, you think there'll be some coherence to it? I mean, what's your, you know, what's your, what flex, what authority do you have as the developer? If we have five or six retail businesses in there, are they just going to all do their same thing in terms of the?
I'll go back to the highest and best use comment. We need a mixture of uses that fuel the incentive needed to develop the site. So that's uses that have longevity, uses that are over a certain level of quality, that's not, that's the business, the actual business that operates and their physical appearance. So that's the control we have to make those choices upfront.
And the control that you guys have is your zoning code, right? So there are requirements in there that, in poll considerations?
Yes. I understand your concerns, Commissioner Griswold, but I don't think we're here to, at this point, to decide on the businesses and what they're going to be. We're here for the TIF tax incremental financing. Right now, that area, and I'm going to grab a number, is raising, paying $50,000 in property tax. I don't know what it is, let's say it is $50,000. Let's say whatever goes in, when that is decided, pays $300,000 in property tax, that 250,000 incremental increase then is reinvested in that area. We're not here, this isn't the place that we're going to talk about the particular projects that are going to be in there. We are going to talk about that, but that's further down the road. Am I correct in assuming that, or am I missing something?
I would say that this, actually, no. I think that this is the spot where you talk about sort of the projects, because this is the TIF project plan. When we get into the revenues and stuff, that'll be in the development agreement. So this is the one time you'll talk about the project.
Meaning the particular property, the potential businesses that are going?
Well, how we're set up in this city is the commission doesn't approve site plans, and so that will go through the Development Review Committee, subject to development regulations and the development agreement, but there will be no other really time to get into the users. The city commission can't limit users that are allowed by zone, by zoning. So, you know, once the property is owned, they could do whatever they wanted now. The reason they're here now is because, you know, you have the incentive portion of it in the TIF district, but, you know, I think Mr. Griswold's questions about or comments about that are in line with what we're doing tonight.
You are approving a project plan. The project plan is in your packet, and it is pretty general as to what it is. I mean, if you look at page two, it is commercial uses, retail, restaurant, office, hotel hospitality, residential, public space, open space, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I don't think there should be a misconception that what you see here is what it is going to be. That's, you know, outside of putting some sort of special provisions and requirements in the development agreement of some kind, as long as it, whatever it is, fits within those parameters of the project plan, then, and fits within what is allowed by zoning, changes to this would not come before the city commission. The TIF statutes do have provisions for a substantial change in a plan, but the way this is written, I mean, I think there'd be, you know, maybe hospital or something like that would be the level you'd have to be looking at to qualify as a substantial change before we come back to you, or industrial, you know, whatever it might be, but as long as it fits within one of these uses, as in the project plan, you are saying that you would be agreeable to that in whatever way, shape, or form it comes, subject to the development agreement, which we're starting to discuss about tying what that's going to look like to numbers of buildings and such, and then to your zoning code and your development regulations.
I'll just add, Justin Kaufman, spoken with you guys before, I'll just add, I mean, we, the plan in this packet is not going to be drastically far off from what we intend to perform on the site. We've been pretty consistent with you guys since day one about that. In fact, I think we had a preliminary, like, resolution of approval before we closed on the property to help us get comfortable that we weren't going to get thrown a bunch of new requirements that we had never heard before after the date of closing. So I'm a little bit concerned because it seems like we're starting to drift in that direction, but I'm the negative one of the group, so that's sort of my job. You know, there's also a whole slew of economic considerations to factor in for us, and we're spending about $16.20 a foot to purchase this land. It's not even land, we're going to have to build retaining walls, we're going to have to rebalance the site, we're going to put at least a million and a half dollars just into the dirt to get it level and buildable. We're going to have to bury some power lines or at least move them. There are so many things. The neighboring, the neighbor.
We understand.
The neighbor, yeah, and as far as fitting in with our surroundings, our hope is that we do not fit in with the surroundings. Our hope is that we set an example for future development across the street and in other areas of the TIF district. So what Trip said is right, we have every incentive to try to get to the highest value of the property that we possibly can.
What's that term again, highest value?
Highest and best use, but I'm actually making more of an economic term. Highest and best use could refer to the quality of a tenant's business, or, I mean, generally the two go in hand in hand, but in this case specifically, we are going to try to drastically increase the property taxes. We have a property tax TIF here. A lot of TIF districts have sales tax TIF involved as well. We are going to be very limited as to what kind of sales tax increment we're going to be able to get on this site. There will be some via CID and other mechanisms, but.
That's next item on the agenda.
But the predominant source of our repayment of this massive investment we're about to undertake in an area that has predominantly not performed well and has failed time and time again with previous developers is based on increasing property taxes. So I hate to say trust us, but I'm kind of asking you guys to trust us. You can look at other projects we've performed in similar types of incentive districts, and I think the results will speak for themselves. That's all we can ask of you guys.
And were some of these projects in the Kansas City metro area?
Yeah, we're working on one right now in Smithville, not too far away, under construction.
Project where another developer failed, one in Raymore where another developer failed, one in Independence, another developer failed there.
Okay.
I mean, we're used to this situation of taking on tough projects, and we, frankly, we put this in that category. We had a perfect storm on our end that enabled us to move forward and purchase this, and we went ahead and did that. But we are undertaking a unique project. The demographics in this town don't show the way a typical retail site would. We're going out on a limb here because we've toured that base, and we've met with the people on the base, we've talked to them about what they need across the street, and we believe that what we're providing here on our plan in a lot of ways matches that desire in the best way, shape, and form that we can in a way that's economically responsible for us. So we're doing everything we can to try to perform for the city and for the base within the economic realities that exist that, you know, also have a lot to do with, you know, the plans you might have in place or envisioned. I mean, we are going to be, in a lot of ways, dictated by the retailers themselves or the restaurants themselves, and ultimately, the important thing is to get them here so that you guys can clean this area up, we can move on from the days of the, you know, hourly rental hotel rooms or whatever was going on there, but we're, you know, we do intend to bring something to the city that you guys are happy with. The ATM situation, if you guys can figure that out for us, we're on board with moving it. That was not our decision. Perfectly agree with you, it wasn't our idea what should go on the corner. Unfortunately, you know, we had to deal with a landowner that was able to stipulate their requirements in order to sell to make this project possible in the first place, so.
Does that ATM, does it have a specific place, or it could be anywhere on that property?
It's a fixed element.
This is the plan that we have been able to get approved by both parties. I mean, they have to approve where the ATM goes, and I think it's pretty clear.
Is it one of those visual tellers, or are they going?
It's an ATM.
Or is that too far?
It's an ATM with a canopy, I mean.
But it's not visual, do they have these visual tellers, where you go up there and you actually, a person's there talking to you?
No. I'd have to, I'd have to get, I'd have to get, I'd have to get more information, but I can tell you, you guys are going to have to approve it.
Okay, okay. Just trying to clarify.
What did you say? Yes, we do care about those details, we sure about it, it's a good question. We don't need to rush through this, this is.
I don't want to rush through this. I'm not saying rush through this.
No, but it was a good question, and I like learning about more and more how these things work, and I appreciate the question from Commissioner.
Commissioner Griswold, you were just told this is your opportunity. Paul and David made the same point in very different ways. Paul mentioned earlier that the hotels, it was a single purpose, the developer and the operator were related. It's a more unique situation. David just read you a list of uses that are allowed within this. It's not an attempt at ambiguity on the developer's part.
Sure.
It's the nature of mixed-use development and redevelopment. You need latitude.
Businesspeople make money, and how we get our requirements met, and I know that this is a public-private partnership, and it's got to continue that way, and, you know, I think the right things are going to be done, and I've learned that what will be guiding this in terms of each one of the individual retailers or businesses will be, you know, doing the right thing with respect, I think, to the appearance and image of, you know, the various properties within this district, but, I mean, the final thing, if there's a concern or a argument, would be our development regulations, correct, in terms of the way things look?
Right, yeah, they govern, they govern development.
So, so that was one thing, when I started reading this a couple days ago, that I don't think I was completely aware of, but, so we can expect maybe a little bit more in terms of maybe some from the standpoint of a concept, but there won't be probably that much more between now and the 12th of November, correct?
I think, as I mentioned in my first remarks, what we plan to do and what Paul had asked, and we're happy to do, is prepare some, an updated colored rendering that kind of gives a little bit more flavor as to what it'll look like with the landscaping.
That would be good.
But, yes, we're always, of course, ultimately subject to the development regulations, and that will be a part of, and a whole other process that we'll have to go to. I think it's also important, they both mentioned it, I think the commission is aware, but just to make it crystal clear that it's pay-as-you-go, so it's not a blank check that's being cut to the developer, as was mentioned earlier, and we will have to, by statute, we're limited in the costs, you have to go actually, go out and expend these costs and then certify them to the city and go through a process with that before you can ever be reimbursed any of the incentive dollars.
If we continue on this timeline in terms of when this comes back for second consideration and final approval, do you have an idea of when all this is going to occur, like the startup? I know it depends on the retail businesses, other businesses, what can you share with us in terms of a timeline?
Well, actually, this spring, we intend, assuming we get all our approvals and can move forward under the vision we have, this spring, we would start demolition, and, you know, when the weather breaks, after the winter, start working on site work, subject to getting through all the planning, you know, part of the process.
And this could be a sequential thing, depending on when you get businesses to sign up, or how, you know, how does?
Exactly right, yeah, it'll be.
What's better for you to have, I mean, it's better for you, I know it's better for us to kind of know that upfront, right?
As soon as our, as soon as the project plan is approved, and as soon as you commence the CID sales tax, then our clocks, if you will, start on rise, so we have absolutely every incentive in the world to make this happen as quickly as possible so that those increments start flowing in.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you all for investing in the northeast part of Leavenworth, I'm removing blight and, you know, helping to beautify the area, and I'm definitely looking forward to working with you all and seeing what businesses that you bring to the northeastern part of Leavenworth.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
So, any other comments?
Is it welcome to the public?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Totally close the public hearing, yeah.
I'm Jo Tim Carr, I live at 813 Northeast Street, and not happy with that. It looks to me, and if you sit on that corner any Saturday morning, you will notice car after car after car after car cutting off the post, making a left-hand turn and headed straight for the bridge. They don't stay in town on Saturdays, they don't spend their money locally, and for you to sit there and say, "Oh, well, they need a daycare." Well, good, they can drop their kids off while they go over to Missouri and spend the rest of their money. That makes me angry, it really does. I don't see where that's enhancing my neighborhood at all. It's cleaning it up, maybe, because the apartment house that she's speaking of is a dump, and it's got some serious problems, legal problems. I just don't see where that's going to enhance, it doesn't give the feel of the neighborhood. We have a lot of older homes, we have a lot of people that have bought older houses and remodeled their houses and have planted themselves there, and this is where they want to grow old. And I look at that, and I see a gas station and an ATM machine, and I see them gassing and going, getting their donut and heading over to Missouri. And then I ask you, you know, you've contributed to more traffic, how are they going to get in and out on that intersection without causing, you know, a disturbance of some kind? It's a really heavy traffic corner, it's probably one of the busiest corners in town. I don't know that for a fact, but the 7-Eleven on the opposite corner constantly stays busy, constantly has cars in and out of that corner. The next mall over is the physical therapist, it stays very, very busy. That used to be a Pizza Hut at one time, it's now, I don't know. And we seem to have a problem keeping restaurants on that street, but if you keep your ears to the But if you keep your ears to the ground and you kinda watch the conversations on Facebook, the City of Leavenworth Facebook page, the Leavenworth Neighborhood Facebook page, people are talking about this. And some of the things that they would really be interested in are a restaurant, a nice family, sit-down type restaurant where you can go for breakfast. Another thing that gets mentioned a lot is another quick shop, which I don't know why we need another quick shop. And then just some small businesses that we can have as part of our neighborhood. A grocery store is always spoken about. We want a grocery store on the north end of town. We don't have anything. People that live in the downtown area in Abernathy, Cody Apartments, those people who have limited mobility, they use Family Dollar as their grocery store. So, you know, there's all kinds of community situations here that could be addressed, and I don't see that addressing any of it. I see that as something that's just gonna pass me by. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Move, we close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Do we have a consensus to consider place ordinance on first consideration as presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Next item on the agenda. Public hearing to consider request by Fort Gate Properties LLC for a community improvement district. Motion open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. We're in our public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the majority, if not the total remainder of this project as far as incentives, timelines, description and stuff, as I mentioned, will come forth in a development agreement. The one item that does not come forth in the development agreement because it's its own animal in Kansas State statute is a community improvement district. That is a supplemental sales tax assessment. We have those currently on both hotels. Actually, all three hotels, not the Hampton Inn, but the, the Downtown Home Two and then the Two Marriott Products. We also have this on Zech Ford as part of that development agreement.
I want to speak for the developers. One of the challenges in, in financing a $7 million project here is you had two active commercial users. Commercial users are appraised at 25%. You're replacing 25% assessed commercial users with commercial users. So you don't get that natural bump if you're replacing residential. The other part is in 2011, when, when the snapshot was taken, both of these were performing and, and the value was high. So the increment isn't all that great. So one of the tools that the developers asked, I think spurred on by our request that they take the commanders in as part of this, which had a seven-figure purchase price, demolition costs, and then the vacation of Sixth Street, was a community improvement district, which is a supplemental sales tax on the properties or on the businesses within that district. It's always a gamble for the developer, again, not speaking for them, because they do then have a higher sales tax on their items. And the uses of that sales tax come to the city. They don't go directly to the developer. And then again, they have to submit eligible costs, eligible by state statute of paid invoices or the, whatever we come up with in the development agreement, and then we reimburse those funds. They're capped by state statute at 22 years. Then they would come off the books. So that's what this is, is the request by Fort Gate Properties LLC to have a community improvement district overlay the project to project plan number three.
Comments among the staff?
Does it state how much?
The CID is?
It says, it states 1.25% over.
22 years.
1.25% over.
22 years?
Yep.
Yeah, over what we have now.
Or, yeah, or until the, you know, the, there aren't reimbursable expenses that are eligible to be paid off. I mean, that's the maximum lifetime of it, but there would be certain CID eligible expenses that could be capped and such. So if those reimbursable expenses are met, then, then it could be, come off then.
So an example would be, and I'm not saying there's gonna be a hardware store, I'm just grabbing a hardware store. Let's say there's a hardware store there, and I go there and buy a hundred dollars worth of product. And I go to Gronus Hardware and buy a hundred dollars worth of product. If I spend a hundred dollars at Gronus, I'll pay 109.50 because we have nine and a half percent sales tax. Well, if I buy that same hardware at that store, I'll pay, what is it? 110.50, uh, no.
20. That's the right cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
110.75 because you're going 1.25 up to 10.75. But I, as, as a buyer, have, you know, I can decide whether I wanna spend my money paying extra 1.25% there or not spend it there.
That's exactly right.
So, and, so that's a marketing thing, those, whoever puts in their retail store that charges sales tax, they're gonna have to justify that to their customer. The customers are gonna have to make that decision.
Correct.
Okay.
The concept of a, uh, community improvement district and the sales tax incentive that goes with that, has, has the city done that before in the last decade?
We've done it multiple times in the last couple of years. We, we have done it with both hotels in the northeast. The Home Two has a CID and also Zech Ford has a CID attached to them.
And would it, like Zech Ford, was it 1.25%?
No, they're 0.75, I believe. It's, it's, they, they can ask for up to 2%.
It is 0.75 at Zech Ford. I know that. Change your oil there. It says 10 and a quarter percent rather than nine and a half percent. I, I know it is that.
So we're taking this step, we've, um, this has been part of our strategy for redevelopment, development, and trying to improve that aspect of Leavenworth. That this isn't something brand new with respect to a technique or a method, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any comments from the public? If not, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Just a consensus. Oh, you are, I'm sorry.
No, we're closing.
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion carried, five zero. Do we have a consensus to consider place ordinance on first consideration as presented?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
This is coming back November 12, too, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda.
Are we finished with, uh, what's next?
Eleven.
Do we need, do we need this redemand?
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Number 11 is still about him.
Okay, that's fine.
The next item is part of this.
Not with us yet, as long as you like.
All right. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We do have hotels in town. You guys are glad, you know, have, yeah, no problem.
We were missing the voice, so, yeah.
Public hearing to consider petition to vacate a portion of an alley in block 97 day in Maculay subdivision. Motion to open the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. We're in our public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'll let our public works director go with the fine details of this. Basically, all this is, is there's an existing city alley on the property that we need to vacate for allow them to do the property, so that's why we're here tonight, and it requires a public hearing, so, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a request from the developer for the projects that we've been talking about lately to remove the vestigial, a remnant of a public alley from block 97. You can see it in the overhead view there. I believe it says 72 feet. This is an alley that was originally platted when the town was subdivided up in the, in the late 1800s. The reason for a public hearing and the action by the commission is the alleys are, in fact, public property and the city has given essentially a license for the public utilities to use them to place their lines and their poles and such. So as part of the process, we contact the public utility companies and ask them if they have any objections to vacating this. Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, but in this case, both Evergy, formerly Westar, and AT&amp;T have identified that they have facilities that we would expect them to work with the developer prior to second consideration to resolve this matter of how they're going to handle existing facilities, if there's any relocation efforts or some other arrangement between the developer and the utility companies. From a staff perspective, that is the, is the only reason that we would have, that we know of that is out there that would prohibit this from moving forward. Staff has no objection to it, assuming that the, the parties will resolve their differences. And as such, we would recommend that it be placed on first consideration. City Clerk's office and City Attorney have been part of this discussion as well. They may have more information, a more detailed perspective on this. But this is not, this is not sealed the deal with utility companies. It merely, merely sets the stage for them to continue their discussions.
Commissioners, I would just add, if you look at the draft ordinance before your first consideration, there's basically a blank section two. At this time, what we would expect for second consideration is one of two things. Either that, uh, issues with utilities will have been worked out in some way by the developer. Or alternatively, if they have not and we still proceed with the vacation, the city would likely reserve back and hold back from the vacation, utility rights to preserve those, to make sure that the, the vacating of the alley doesn't vacate any interest that those utilities might have. So we'd expect by the next time this comes back that there will either be language in there reserving that or we'll have some information that that won't be necessary because the developer has, has worked out deals with, with the utilities as to relocations.
What would be the reserve? Could you just explain in a little more detail?
It would say, I mean, it essentially would say that the city hereby, you know, vacates, it vacates the street accepting, reserving unto the city rights as to ease, you know, easement and utility rights for utility lines of existing public utilities located within the area.
So the development company would have to work around that.
Then they, yeah, and then at some point, yeah, they would have to still probably work around in some way or the lines would stay put in some way, but just so that we don't leave the utility providers without any legal rights for the installation of the lines. We need to reserve those.
Is it unusual in this point, at this point in the process that these differences, these two differences with these two utility companies exist?
Not really, in my experience.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's important to clarify here. So the reason for bringing this forward now, we just, we sought to align it with the other approvals. And correct me if I'm mistaken on this. I think what, what happened is that it was 1980, I wanna say. This entire alley at that point was, was an alley owned by the city. I think in 1980 or, or about then, they vacated the entire thing save for this 72-foot portion here. I think that that may have been vacated. We couldn't find the documentation for it. The city couldn't. So it likely could have just been erroneously excluded at that point. So it's more of just a cleanup item, so we do have utilities running through the portion that's already been vacated. And I think there's similar language in that ordinance to what David was just addressing that basically says with respect to existing utilities, the city reserves the right for, for those to continue moving forward. So we would, of course, would wanna take a look at that language, but I don't see any issue with handling it that way.
If you can.
If we can. Just to be clear, I think that, yeah, it would be premature to enter into like a formal binding agreement with this, with the utilities at this point. So it would probably be, the agreement would be an acknowledgement that if and when we come to relocate the utilities that we're going to, to work with those guys and cooperate with the utility companies.
And you're comfortable with that, mister?
Yeah, I, I think we'll be able to get the right language in there.
All right. And just for clarification, this is basically an alley in nowhere. This is no one shortcut that's
No.
people are using. Just 72 feet that has, yeah, so it's not gonna interfere with anybody in the neighborhood saying, that's why I
No one knows it's there.
beat the traffic or anything. Okay, yeah.
Any other comments from the public? If not, motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Do we have a consensus to consider and place ordinance on first consideration?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on forward. Uh, next item on the agenda, consent agenda. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, after a review of the claims for this time, I saw one thing popped out here at $473,691. So I asked what that was, and that's for payment of the granite seal project. So, anyway, I got that clarified, but after review of the claims for October 5, 2019 through October 18, 2019, I move that we approve the, the amount of $1,715,787.27 net amount for payroll number 21 effective October 11, 2019, and the amount of 31, $331,482.94. No police or fire pension. Second.
Motion second. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Now, well, we are at the end of our meeting. I just would like to invite everyone to come out to Bob Doughty Park. We will be having our ribbon cutting at 12 o'clock at Bob Doughty Park. Uh, direct address, 100 North.
Yeah, on Saturday.
Yep, Second Street.
26, right?
Yep, yep. This upcoming Saturday, 12 o'clock. Bring your basketballs, bring your Jordans. You can see me dunking. I'm gonna make it happen.
We're gonna have some hot dogs or?
Uh, we're gonna do sandwiches, sandwich trays, and chips, and water, and maybe some cookies.
Okay, great.
So BYOB, bring your own basketball. Commissioner Bader.
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
No, Mr. Dedeky. Commissioner Price.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna reiterate, you know, the Veterans Day Parade's November 11th. And all the, all of you that have attended and those of you haven't, it's always a big parade. They, is it, is it not the second largest parade in the country or second largest western Mississippi or something? It's, it's a big parade, so, uh, you know, 100th anniversary is gonna be big. We all know, well, I think, I know, the commission knows, this is our last meeting before voting because next week's the fifth Tuesday, and I believe that there's no study.
As of right now, there's, we, we will not have a study session on election night.
So, uh, so the next time that we meet will be November 11th. I do urge everyone to vote. You can start early voting now at the courthouse or obviously Election Day on 5 November. Three seats in play. When we come back after our first meeting, November 12th, we'll know who the new commissioners are, but one that we will be missing for sure will be, not on November 12th, but by the end of the month or first of December, is Commissioner Dedeky. I'm proud to say that I've served with Commissioner Dedeky for nearly 11 years, and as many of you have seen even tonight, he and I may disagree on different topics, sometimes vehemently we disagree. But one thing I will always say about Commissioner Dedeky, he, uh, he does what he feels is correct for the community. He stands by his position. His integrity can never be questioned. Even, and as I said, even though he and I disagree, and I really appreciate working with Commissioner Dedeky. Now, a little bit sad that he will not be coming back here.
You'd like to quit, Mark. I'll have to get my handkerchief.
Well, that's the goal. I, I, when, when that happens, that means I'm successful. But when you say the name Dedeky in this town, in this county, it's a family of public service. You know, obviously started by his father, but you look at the sheriff, you look at the school district. This is a family that means a lot and has contributed a lot to this community, and it's all selfless service. And I appreciate it, and I thank you. I'm gonna miss you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And you will be leading the Veterans Day Parade, correct?
We'll talk about it. I just have one brief technical clarification. The meeting on the fifth has not officially been canceled. We wouldn't do that until the week before, just to reserve that. I want the public to think that if something does come up between now and then, we could have it, but we would officially cancel it before. No, it's okay.
But we only have one to 29, correct?
Right, the, the fifth Tuesday, but November 5th is, is what Commissioner Price also mentioned, but that's not officially canceled.
All right, okay. I just wanna say, and we did discuss a very weighty and very important topic with respect to the city commission and the future of Leavenworth tonight in terms of this particular district that we're planning to redevelop, and I do appreciate Mr. Kresh in terms of his service on the planning commission and coming forward and giving his input to the city commission tonight. Thank you very much, John. Also, Mr. Cunningham for your feedback. And also Ms. Wells, and I think there was one other community member, I think she may have left. But I do appreciate you coming forward, and it's, it's important as part of, part of this process. And I'm, I'm comfortable with what I decided to be part of this consensus tonight, but, but we will continue to do our due diligence and ask for your continued support. And, and if you have insights or things that we could benefit from, please don't hesitate to come forward in the future and, and comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Begin voting with Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Meeting adjourned.